Go ahead and call this budget meeting to order. We're here to see me to talk about the proposed 2023 budget. This is our second meeting, the last one last week, but we got an introduction to the overall budget. So the first thing we're going to talk about is the capital improvements plan. So that I'll turn it over to staff. The presentation.
Would you, you know, everybody before? Terry made two minor adjustments to what was presented last week.
Talked a little bit about each fund and the budget for each fund. I have two updates. Quality MS four fund, we had a change that was came through from the York County Consortium. Mark confirmed that for next year, 2023, that we do not have to pay an annual fee of $224,000. That fee is going to be postponed postponed until 2024 based on the fact that DEP has not confirmed or decided what they want to do with the next permit cycle. And they're working on those goals. So that $224,000 was taken out of Fund 65, which is that's for. Major change and a major change for those funds. Everything else is remaining same. Have any other changes?
So nothing adjusted. I know we're going to talk about those survey. It's not a best reflect.
At this point, we haven't made any changes to the capital improvements plan. We had gone through the presentation last week. Just as a reminder, it's a five-year plan. It covers years 2023 through 2027. And all of the combined items total just over $30 million for that five-year period. I have a simple question. If anybody has any questions from last week in the items that? Like discuss.
Questions? I, I think I know the answer to it, but could you walk me through the instruction line items for 2023? In the capital budget specifically, particularly as a relation administration. Is that the police station?
That is the police station. Yes. And that's an estimated cost based on where we are at the end of this year. So that certainly could change.
Oak Creek interceptors, obviously something to talk about.
Yes.
That's going to spread over three years.
Correct. Yes.
Tom, do you have any questions?
Nope. Thank you.
Anything else, Charles?
Just a comment. I was feeling a little badly that the police department's capital budget for 2023 was only $90,000. Then I remembered they're getting a brand new building.
There's a question.
Um, the next item on the agenda was a review of the 2023 budget. As I mentioned, it was presented last week. Overall, the budget totals just over $41 million with all of the funds combined. Any question I can answer? For any of the departments, general fund departments, any other funds?
The only thing that I walked away thinking about last week was the park funds. And we talked a little bit about the revised guidelines for spending that now. As of right now, no specific plan, but a timeline, I should say deadline, basically expense funds. Is there any merit or value to assigning some of those funds to this budget at this point? Or are we confident that we can use those funds as they're intended by the dates required in the future?
Um, I feel confident based on the value of the capital improvements budget that we have in front of us, that we won't have any problem legitimately spending the $2.8 million. The number one thing in my mind, and it's just in my mind, that it could be used for, and it could certainly be used for a lot of other things as well, would be to meet our final project for the MS four. Street restoration project, which is another street close to the wastewater treatment plant. It can be used for other things as well, but there is definitely legitimate expenses that can be spent on cap.
By the way, I got a text from Mark. I also gave a German meeting before he gets. Could be another record.
Last week, we had also mentioned a long list of grants, grant funding that we have received. Still waiting for some funds to come in. That totaled just over $7.6 million for our total grant funding. We did receive word today that we were receiving another grant award for the police department for $250,000 for a de-escalation grant, some training grant. So that news came today. That was not included in my list last week.
That's great progress in some of the years that I've been on the board that we said we would be intentional about grant funding. We've gone after grant funding. Congratulations to staff. Certainly makes budgeting a little easy.
Makes it the challenge. Yeah. Yeah. Challenge of general fund balancing every year. Makes a lot easier.
Sewer rate increase.
Well, the sewer fund budget was based on increase. The last time we increased sewer rates was in 2018. We run a regular five-year schedule where we were increasing sewer rates at that time. We currently have one of the lowest sewer rates in the area. Long list of York County, Lancaster County, Dawfords County, as well as a few in Adams County to see where those municipalities know with sewer rates. And we are still one of the lowest that's out there at $70 per quarter for residential rates. So we're looking to increase the rate, the proposed rate of $5 per quarter, which would raise rate, the president's rate till $70, $75, that current up to $80. Flat rate residential rate.
Can you walk me through the use of the funds for that increase?
It's going to be operational, to increase operational costs as well as continuous maintenance and more capital for that. We have seen quite a bit this past year inflationary increases with a lot of the projects that happen in sewer plant as well as higher prices.
Very, I had no problem raising the residential rate to $75, black commercial rate. But it looks like we're also proposing a secondary increase in 2024.
Yeah. Yeah. As we look at the increase in the operational costs, right now we increase our rates. We really should be at that $82 rate. We don't think that raising it $82, it's a little bit harsh on everyone's budget. But we think raising the rate will get us to that point over three years as well as be able to have a incremental rate, which is easier on people's budgets, able to handle it for sure.
As I think I pointed out last week, the sewer rates that we set are only just very custom, which is not for one municipality. Are contributing municipalities we build once per year and it's based on the prior year audit. And it's based on their percentage of capacity and the waste water treatment.
Does that vary at all? Like so if one municipality decreases the amount of use of the sewer plants, does that adjust their expense? Or more likely, if they would increase their use, like if they put a residential subdivision in or something, and more customers, that would be increased. And then they're responsible for building their own restaurants. They are to compensate for their expenses.
Yes.
And we're still the cheapest, it looks like. But we have the CapEx expense too. Do we build them also for CapEx?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So that, that expenses.
Should spring it's very, and this is by articles under green, and spring it's very fronts everything. So we spent $10 million on a project in front of it all. And then through the debt service, they contributing municipalities pay their share of debt when it be front all.
I have to ask this question. I think I know the answer, but given that we're so much lower than everyone's, do we have a very high degree of confidence? There's not some unknown expenditure working down the road? Some major project that we have in fact, and that we should be building conservators? That we're not, by keeping the rates where they are, we end up with much larger increases.
I'm not aware of anything other than if we decide to move ourselves from the city's wastewater treatment plant and expand our own treatment plant, that would be quite expensive to do that. But that's the only thing that I'm aware of that's an outlier that we thought 100% aware of. And as I mentioned last time, Lou Parhorn and Kenny Cravenville are still going through that draft fund with board of that houses.
I guess given that, I'll say that personally, I'm in support of the proposed increase for 2023. I will defer it on the 2024, so we know more.
And I asked Terry to put that in there just to show that here is where we should be. Here's what we're recommending, but the future years will be up to the board at that time.
Are we comfortable publicizing these York County comparative figures when we announce this rating increase?
It's readily available, right?
Yes.
We call combination of Terry, Sandy and myself got the information directly from those municipalities.
It's also posted online. On the website.
Do we normally release a press release about the budget? We do not.
And some of our neighboring municipalities, and I don't want to quote numbers because I don't have the exact numbers, but some of our neighboring municipalities that are contributors to the city's former treatment plant have already announced what their rates are going to go to. And one municipalities in 2027 saying there's going to go to $300 per quarter, low $300. And I don't want to quote that exactly, but it's.
So those rates are some of those municipalities tied into that are possibly going higher.
Any questions?
Glad there's no taxes.
All right. Next would be the offers budget. The and yes, as a Manchester president being affected by this sewer rate increases, not liking what I'm hearing. The offers budget, uh, we're putting 2023, information is really unchanged since our September 2023 presentation. We're showing a 4% increase over 2022 expenses. Excuse me. Focus of our 2023 budget is one of our objectives from our plan is identified or approved earlier this year. One of the big ones is training and our personnel to satisfy some new job description requirements. We are being forced into a new recommended assistance to the state. And that's, that's coming at an added cost of previous years. We are working on our next apparatus order. And we're at the present time, we're developing those specifications. So 86% of our budget is still relative to personnel costs. And that's held pretty significant, are pretty consistent over the last six, seven years. Non-personnel costs. We've done a really good job, I feel, over the last six or seven years of holding, holding the line. Although in 2023, we participated in a little bit of a jump. A lot of that is attributed to oil prices, maintenance, our apparatus fleet is now for the most part out of warranty. Turnout here for our personnel. So far this year, we've seen 16% increase in the cost of our, our PPE with boots and helmets. And we're enjoying 18% to 25%. Increase. Our manufacturers have already told us to expect an increase after the first of the year. So it's getting getting pretty, pretty expensive to outfit our guys. For Springsberry specifically, cost sharing formula for your during a fire and rescue. Springsberry is 37%, Manchester's at 38%, Spring Garden's at 25%. Total request for Springsberry for 2023, and this includes operations and capital is $3,269,586. Like I said, that's a, that's a 4% increase over previous years in our, in our expenses. I do believe that Terry reported last week a two and a half percent increase. There was last year, the number that was in your budget. If you remember, it was not the number that we ended up having approved in December. So I think that's where that disparity comes in. So operational budget, $3,089,998. And then capital was 179,588. And once again this year, no unfunded liability for finding. Real quick overview, if anybody has any question.
Chief, I'm glad you're here. I did one question though. I didn't want to share with the board some of my thoughts on what was specific. The Albert Ward, the question I had, when you look at the Italian cheese, which are part of the reason for the request for change in benefits. Do the Italian cheese provided a company here?
Yes, they have, they have a vehicle that is, is a take home vehicle to be able to get back in here when we have an incident.
So when we look at perks, Italian cheese versus captains, that was not a difference.
No. That is strictly a work use here. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said they can take them as a personal. They take it home so they can come back in here. But once it's home, it doesn't get used for any other purpose. That's, that's in your employment agreement.
So they oftentimes go directly from home to a location.
Yes. Yeah.
Chief, do you want to speak to the hiring plan that you have as, as part of this future budgets?
Quite simply, there's no, no new personnel in this budget, although we did account for turnout here and training for the possibility of three new employees. And the plan, my plan presently, as long as I get authorization through the commission is to request from all three townships support for a safer grant. And that period usually comes into play in January each year. I still believe we were able to staff a truck, one of our ladder trucks, 52% of the time and three people. The other ladder truck weren't able to stay up through people by 18% of the time. Still strongly that, that we need to get those numbers up for ladder trucks. So that's where the three people become in play. The safer grant is 100% for employee costs as far as salary benefits. The only thing it doesn't include really is the PPE or uniforms and, and their. How long is that for that grant? That will be for three, no cost for three years. As long as I, I need to put, put a asterisk there, as long as the grant guidance stays the same for 2023 as opposed to they've changed that several times.
So that would cover the costs and benefits of those hires.
Yes.
Three, four years.
Yes.
And we would not hire in 23, those additional staffers or staff?
That would, that would be up to the commission. Once we would, once we would get notice of an award, the commission would be able to decide if they wanted to accept the word or not, based on present economy and everything. When that comes out, I don't even know. They're still giving grant awards for this year's safer grant.
Can you give the board an update on integrating volunteers into staffing?
Uh, we're working with, with all of our volunteer companies to try to bolster our recruitment efforts. We're still waiting on some artwork back from some sign companies. Two, two projects we're working on. One is advertising kind of at the borders of our first due area along, along the roadways. Letting them know who's providing fire protection and also including in that message that we're always looking for volunteers. One of the other items that we're working on with them also is billboards through Lamar advertising. We're still waiting on the artwork to come back. For that, as soon as we get that back and get thumbs up from the commission, we can move on that. And we do have some of that attention money still on the budget that we can make use of that. The other thing that we're working on, and we're actually meeting Wednesday night to continue working on is the state has made a available volunteer tax credit that local municipalities can, can act to encourage volunteerism as a way to give back to them. It's been done in Truth Berry Borough, Truth Berry Township just this year. At one point in time, the, the York County Commissioners were actually on board with that. Kind of promised to push that along. I haven't heard anything in the last couple of months. But that's something that we would like to be able to bring to all three of our charter townships and following permissions from the commission, of course. Probably in 2023 to see if there's not something to be done there to help encourage volunteers. Most recently, and I think in your report for tomorrow night, I included some numbers. We were getting people in the door to apply. The people that are following through. Not a lot. Probably, probably I'm going to off the top of my head, I'll report from, I'm going to say about 75% of people that get started in a process kind of fade away. That's something the command staff has to work on. We allow, make sure the system to, to pretty much run that. We have to do a better follow-up and find out why those people goes into safety after entering some process.
That would be an interesting, interesting thing to learn.
I have my suspicions, but I'd like to hear from them. Yeah.
And how, how are you going to do that?
Well, when they apply, we have all their contact information. We just need to do a better job of pursuing them and asking these questions.
And who does that?
Well, nobody does it right now. That's the point. Laurie's trying to follow up with them to get them scheduled for the, the different aspects of the process, process. But we're not really, I, I haven't enlisted her to contact somebody to ask those questions. And that's something that we need to deal with.
Chief, this question may be better for Pat Harvey, but I'll ask you while you're here. The three firefighters that we want to hire, we select the brand. If we do that, do we run any risks in the next contract where we have created, also called an unbalanced schedule, so to speak, where we've taken arbitrarily three positions and filled them on select stations on select shifts? Is that a negotiating challenge for us, needing to access, like as they did in the last contract, said we want?
I don't think it creates a problem. Off the top of my head, the only thing that I could see that they might do would be to attempt, again, attempt not actually get it, but attempt to say, well, now we have one more person on each shift. So we need to you know, change, change the way we calculate how many people are off on a given day or something. But that's actually one of the reasons I, I would like, we know that's not necessary. We know how many people, you know, base or number. We can allow all the day, one more on each shift doesn't affect it. So that's anything I can really think of all the time.
I have a, I have a sort of related question. Chief, you, you quoted numbers on the, the, the two trucks when you, how often, what percentage of the time you're able to staff with three firefighters? I didn't write those numbers down, but do you, have you projected out what happens to those percentages? If you get the three new firefighters, is, how much of benefit is that?
Only so much as, as what occurs on in Manchester Township, simply because they're coming, the engine and the truck comes from one station. So if I can guarantee staffing at three eventually, and that's not even my focus right now. My focus is ladder truck down here. But just to give you an example, if I'm, if I'm staffing that truck 52% of the time, I can take that to 100%. Then it seems logical to me that 52% kind of transfers to the engine where I'm already staffing it, say, I don't, I don't even know the number, maybe 18% of the time. And I've got a really good mix there of, of the desired staff down here. I really haven't calculated that out because we're basically only staffing one unit per station. So I think, I think that does make a difference.
But so far we have not had a cost benefit analysis done.
Yes.
Is that something that may come out of the consultant report in some way?
That's a good question. I, I can't tell you at this point. We expect that. We expect that, uh, I'm hoping it's ready to, to present in November.
Real quick, with the safer grant, if you, if the fire company goes through with the safer grant, are you, are there strings attached to that, that you have to keep those officers per X amount of time?
To the best of my recollection, the only, uh, uh, the only string, if you will, that's attached is that during the performance period of the grant, which is three years, you can't reduce your staffing. Once, once the performance period is over, it's, it's entirely empty.
Is, i- i- is, is this the same grant program that police use or have used?
No, no, sir, this is strictly a fire service grant. What will be the cost in, you know, year four for those three? I don't have a pay scale problem, I'm sorry, but year four, they would fall into the, into, so that'd be a big jump in your pool. Process, yeah. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, thanks, chief.
I just want to share a few updates from sitting on the Yalfer Board over the past year, I know we spent a lot of time wrestling with the budget last year, ultimately wrote down the budget from the Yalfer last year. Uh, we had a lot of conversations last year about a lot of different things, just some updates on those. One of the important topics we talked about last year was governance structure. In terms of how we were not comfortable that the governance structure that is in place today was the correct governance structure to manage that organization that size of people. Uh, I would just say that Spring Sperry Township is the only one, or was the only one interested in discussing that and moving on. Any changes forward, Spring Garden, Manchester have no interest at this point in changing the governance structure. However, they have invited us to come back and discuss specific proposals on how to change the governance structure. Are they willing to take those specific proposals? I will just say that from a governance perspective, my personal opinion, the governance has gotten even weaker during the past year. And that's not because we've added lesser people, it's the people that we've added are coming in brand new, have no experience as firefighters, have never served on a fire board before, and therefore, kind of like all of us, we're first-year supervisors, you don't really get your hands around what the township's all about, so you've been there for a while. So it's that lack of experience, which is always going to be an issue with Yalfer on a board that's a volunteer board like that. That's always going to remain an issue, and I think until that's corrected, Yalfer's going to continue to struggle with governance issues. Uh, the second thing I wanted to mention, uh, there was, the chief had mentioned, or someone had mentioned the staffing study is on. And one of the things that, uh, we had asked to have looked at to support the additional three positions was to have a staffing study. And there was a consultant hired who sounds like he's getting close to presenting a report. Uh, I had a chance to speak with him about two months ago, uh, he came to one of the meetings. He offered if anybody had any questions, call him, so I did take advantage of it, next day I called him and shared some of my specific concerns about staffing study. And so I don't have any insight into what's coming, other than to say his background, his, had a career firefighter, uh, brought through the union ranks, and in the conversations I had, I could tell that some of the concerns I shared with him were ones that he hadn't heard about. So we appreciate the comments, whether or not any of that's going to show up in the results, I have no idea, but I guess we'll have that result maybe about a month or so, it would have been. So know what the staffing says, I'm sure. As far as the specific Yalfer budget for this year, uh, one of, to me, there's three items in there that I think there are further discussion to some differently. Uh, one of the capital expenditures, which this is not really a budget issue for next year, but Yalfer did present a five-year budget snapshot, which I think they're required to by the bylaws or something like that, so it took a typical five years. And because of the five-year look forward, there are some apparatus that will be replaced say twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, based on the timeline, the timetable that's set up by staff, that the decision needs to be made, I guess either the end of this year or beginning of next year, replacing orders for those equipment, that equipment in order for it to arrive by twenty twenty-five. So even though it doesn't impact the budget next year and the year after, that decision does, does need to be made, and that's part of that five-year projection that was put in place. And I think the timing works out, that just as some of the costs, as we get done paying for some of the current apparatus that we purchased two years ago, this, as they drop off, these new pieces come on, so we don't really have a drop-off at the end of expenditure for that. Uh, improvements for those layers. Uh, the second item, which the chief talked about, was the safer grant, I don't think I could add anything more than what he already did on the safer grant. Uh, there are training costs and so forth in the budget for next year for the three firefighters. But at this point, it's assumed that for the next three years, if we, if we get the safer grant, that they would hire the three firefighters, which are paid for for the next three years. Uh, the last item, which I think I mentioned at one of our meetings that we haven't talked about tonight, is there is a request in this budget, a proposal, to change the benefit structure for the command staff. And I think it has mostly to do with pensions, is that correct? All to do with the pensions?
Primarily, yeah, um, if, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
The, uh, uh, our commission, uh, back in August, actually was that, uh, when you take a look at the retirement plans of all of our staffs, you have that segment of our department that has a D V plant, that's closed, nobody's getting in it, nobody's getting in it. But we're putting in about seventeen percent, uh, is roughly what the cost per, per forty, is seventeen percent of our salary into that. Uh, the cash balance plan that they just, uh, that Manchester had for a while, that our people just got awarded through arbitration, uh, has gone in about seventeen percent too, that's, uh, twelve, that would have put in five of their, but when they, when they're fortunate enough to reach the administrative level, uh, it's still a ten percent or two percent, uh, match. And quite honestly, that gets in the way of people wanting I think we're doing a good job of maintaining that separation in salary, uh, between our, our senior captains and, you know, battalion chiefs, but, um, we're finding out that when, when we talk to the people about moving, one of the concerns that they have is, why would I come up there and have to freeze whatever retirement I'm in to take a lesser retirement, uh, still in the same department? Uh, so we do anticipate that if, if we don't make some correction, uh, and to that aspect of the benefit factors, that we're going to run into trouble, uh, with getting people to promote. And so that is a concern, and that, that's a concern I express too. I can tell you right now, we're, we are replacing the battalion chief. Uh, we've got three people that are going through the process, but all three of them have expressed to me doubt as to whether or not they will actually take a promotion that's offered to them because of the financial. Uh, and quite honestly, if we were to look outside the department, um, we may very well be able to find somebody that is, uh, looking for that second career. But I, I feel pretty certain that if we were to try to steal somebody from another career department, they would look at our benefit package and say, if that's what it is, I'm going to stay where I'm at. This is not something we can just, somebody off the street will, so there's I think, uh, Solicitor Tilly said it best that night, you know, um, commission can decide on how they want to do things, but what it does, uh, that we presented, does, uh, provide the resources that the commission can make a decision to include that situation, situation. Okay.
I'll, I'll just add to that, the concern I had during all that of the budget meeting was more, and I kind of keep, keep, keep coming back the same thing with the governance structure. You know, this, this whole pay and benefits structure that we have in Yalfer is not as formalized and disciplined as it is at Spring Sperry Township. And we've seen evidence of that through the years, uh, we went back to last year when there was some proposed job or paying increases proposed for some administrative staff, where when we took a close look at that, we learned that the job descriptions, the duties performed, and more importantly, the skills possessed didn't marry up with specific positions that the request for being requested. Uh, those of you who were here when Mr. Tumidi was on the board, who served as a Yalfer rep less than two years ago, uh, there was a suggestion back then that we needed to increase the pay package for the firefighter, because I think we had an open at that time for a firefighter, and there was a suggestion we need to increase the pay in order to attract firefighters, to which Justin Tumidi asked the important and relevant question, how many applications do you have for the position now? I think the answer was sixty or seventy applications, so the request that we couldn't recruit the team staff didn't marry up with the reality of what we're experiencing. So here is that without a formal personnel program in place, we're going to face these continual annual, I call them drip, 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 changes to pay and benefits that are going to put us in a budget position down the road, I don't think. Now, what, how we resolve the issue of creating a battalion chief, I don't know, that's not my expertise, I don't pretend to know what we need to do there. Uh, going outside from my perspective, may not be such a bad thing beyond the training that's going to be required to bring them up to speed with the Yalfer procedures and operations, but I just feel a more formalized discipline look should be taken in situations like that before we make the budget commitment to change piecemeal as we seem to have done in the past, and seem to run a pattern to do with it. Charles, anything to add?
I will say that, um, one, I appreciate your perspective, George, and I think it was a year ago, we had this discussion regarding to increase staffing, the patients could have on the budget long-term, that, uh, if we would add three firefighters every other year or ten years, this was discussed, uh, that we'd be looking at an increased payroll of fifteen million dollars, that was back then, maybe two percent. Certainly inflation's going to change their stomachs to, to hire them. I had a wonderful conversation with the chief back in early December, and Mark Haskins, I really had a good four-hour conversation, will tell you to understand what the need is for the firefighters, how the, the metrics actually work. There's about forty-two hundred calls a year, of which two hundred become pretty serious ones, where that staffing is important. It boils down to, in terms of real structured fires, about forty. Plus or minus was the numbers I had last year, so about one percent of the calls, we do need, you know, some additional staffing on these, on the apparatus for safety and the like. So I was really encouraged to, to really have a good understanding of the need for it, and certainly last year, we went through our budget arrangement, um, not exactly confident how we're going to pay for fifteen million dollars down the road without hiring. But we ended up, as a board and a split, though, deciding not to do it. So I came to the Yalfer Commission somewhat encouraged that there would be the opportunity to, you know, as a commission, to really deep down and get an understanding of the start matters collectively, as I met with Chairman Rooney to kind of like identify, you know, as I collectively took our position uh, from the December meeting, met with Chairman Rooney to go over again, these are our three concerns. These are areas that we can, um, explore and work. And I think as a commission, to come to understand some of these issues as to, you know, what does the commission think? Is the ideal way to fund this as well as, you know, what is the ideas? As things have evolved, the, the commission has instead elected, uh, at the end of last year and into this year, elected to engage in the study at a cost of fifty thousand dollars, I consistently voted against this, I was looking for the commission as a team to come together. I think the Spring Sperry representatives have come to the commission looking for some sort of strategic planning collectively as a group. That has pretty much been fought, not necessarily been received on, or fallen on deaf ears, but it seems like the commission collectively wants us to deliver what it is that we want at the moment, and I was somewhat open to, you know, let's, as a commission, let's work together as a team. That has not come, so we've come around to this, this budget here. I salute the chief for doing a lot of work from both a strategic planning standpoint, from the operations of the Yalfer organization. Uh, I know that he had done some strategic planning throughout the course of the year, we got to see that strategic plan, I think he's been very successful in implementing that, we did do a cost benefit analysis relative to that plan, and where he's, he's kind of like explained how some of these various tactics and strategies won't really have any revenue effect. Uh, but when we come down to the budget, I think we also have some great opportunities to explore, uh, some volunteer planning. I did have the opportunity to attend a few workshops at P Sats and reported the same to the commission, there are some, there is some ways to make some volunteer, um, opportunities to expand our volunteer force. Uh, here we are at this point, we do have a budget opportunity, there is some payroll challenges, I think George has some legitimate concerns. Uh, I don't know if the rest of the commission shares it, I do share some of those concerns that he has. Uh, and I think the chief has done a very good job also looking here at the safer grant. I think the safer grant is also something that we talked about a while ago, um, but I'm glad to see the chief is putting it into the budget this year to, to make some sort of a, a good strategic plan to fund at least the front half of those additional firefighters, and we'll see where we go, because he is not advocating tonight doing three year for the, every other year at this point, it's coming up its way to fund it for the first two years, so I applaud the chief for that. But, yeah, we're, we're, we're going to get a, a study, uh, I'm not sure it's going to have the panacea that we're looking for, how we study, what, what, or how we staff, how we fund, but I'm, I am approaching it with an open mind, I'm hopeful that we do get some answers, uh, and see where we can go from there, but in terms of the long-term plan, the payroll and the staffing and the long-term funding, I think we still have those issues. And it's unfortunate the commission did not kind of work together as a team to, to really address that, kind of really pushed us on to onto making a, I don't know, almost, in my, the way I thought is, we had to give a spot answer, this is the way we wanted to go, we wanted to have discussion, so. Supervisor Bishop, do you have anything to add?
I'm just the alternate representative from Spring Sperry.
I know you are.
I, uh, I, 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 I definitely, you know, I mean, I agree with, with George and Charles, I, you know, from my point of view, it's relatively simple. I think that, that Chief Hoff has done an excellent job within the parameters of his position. Cause he, I think he runs a very good operation. I think the weakness is above him. And, uh, and that weakness was created by the three municipalities, and, uh, I, it's been there from the very beginning in terms of governance that, uh, George and Charles talked about, and I think that's that's something that in the long run need to be addressed. And I don't know exactly how to do that, but, uh, but, uh, you know, I think clearly the, the commission, um, you know, as, as Charles laid out, hasn't really been interested in responding to our concerns.
Well, they did challenge us to come back with a plan, so we did get it to that, to that, so.
The problem is, the problem with that is that the commission can't do anything about it.
Spend on that thought?
The, the commission does not define the structure of the commission that govern or that governs Yalfer. The commission exists, but it can't restructure itself. The commission was created and is an entity created by the three municipalities. In the beginning, it was created by the two municipalities. Now it's essentially created and gets all of its authority from the three municipalities. So I think that's what where change will ultimately need to come from. Because the commission can't, you know, it can't change its own structure. At least, uh, in my opinion, it can.
Not directly, but indirectly, aren't the representatives from the three municipalities?
They are. But I I'm I'm not, I'm not interest, I'm not too enthusiastic about the representatives as from those three municipalities as uh, as George so articulately put it, who drew the short straw. Are are the are the ones that we want going back to the other two municipalities and encouraging them that change needs to happen.
But that's the only way that can happen.
No. It can, but it, the only way it can happen is for the individual municipalities to get together and make change. I mean, doesn't you know, I mean.
We're talking about how you mix the same group of people up.
I'm not sure.
And what order you have the discussions? I mean, the collective boards of the three, it's it's the collective boards of the three municipalities from which the the representatives on the board are drawn.
For to to give you a specific example, I I I would have very little confidence in the chairman of the Alpha Commission going back to either Spring Garden or Manchester Township and 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 convincing them that change needs to happen.
So what that tells me is that we would likely have the same success if we tried to approach that municipality and tried to talk to the other members who would be looking to their board members on Yoffa to give them their perspective. So it's back to, we have the same mix of people, three municipalities, three boards. A subset of which is on the Yoffa Commission. And we have to find a way if we're going to make a change, get that collective group of people to understand the need for change and the appropriate change.
Okay, I I disagree with your assumptions at the beginning, but yeah, I mean, it it's hard either way.
What was the assumption you disagree with?
That they're the same people, that that the 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 Alpha representatives from the other two municipalities would be just as good at convincing their municipalities to make a change as someone else would.
Okay, I'll accept that. So thoughts on how that happens?
We need somebody really persuasive. I I don't know. I don't know how it.
Justin, why? Well, and we need a good proposals.
You need proposals, yeah.
Yeah, we need a good proposal.
I think Springfield has some homeworks to learn before we start necessarily challenging.
Well, as I said before, Spring Garden and Manchester's one have no interest in spending any time.
That's clear.
They're happy to show up at the meetings and just say yes, Dave.
So if we don't do something, it's not going to happen.
Correct.
And we've talked about this, talked about it last year, budget time, we've talked about it occasionally throughout the year. And yet here we sit. What is the best way to get this moving to a point where we can actually have a proposal to bring back?
Uh, my opinion is we have a collective discussion about ideas about a group of things. And I know there are some thoughts among individual members on the board here in terms of what that might look like. And it might be just putting some of those on the table, vetting them.
So I won't suggest that we do that tonight, but I suggest that we can set the time aside to have a session to specifically focus on.
Good idea.
We don't set some time aside and focus on it, it's not going to get done. I'll make sure my work doesn't have computer problems and have to get get distracted time for that. And my apologies. Yeah, I wasn't looking at it. All right, so we'll we'll schedule a time. Let's get it together. We'll have a discussion. We'll figure out how to proceed. Anything else on the fire budget?
Is is that something, how how are we going to schedule that? Just out of curiosity.
I'll send an email out to the board, try to gather some dates, times.
Unless you want to do that right now, Don?
It's up to you.
No, I don't need to do it tonight. I meant schedule it tonight. How much time do we want? And how long from now until we can get together? How long is the advertisement?
What's the soonest date we'd be advertising? After the advertisement.
We can advertise tomorrow and you can have for that meeting night.
We have.
Pretty motivating as well.
Yeah, so do they want to pick a date that's not?
I would think just taking off top of my head in the morning now that you want to do it before.
So my thought on that is, what if we happen to have a great, healthy discussion? I would hate for us to actually to impact and try to make real great.
Do it the early part of next week?
I'm out town until Tuesday afternoon.
Tuesday or Wednesday of November, first and second. Any of those dates work?
Yeah, the second. In the first words.
We only have one meeting in November on the sixteenth, correct? So we have the week of the seventh, three.
I was a lot of
tenth, Thursday night.
Started early at six.
And what was the date on September?
That work for you, Don?
Yep. Uh, tenth, tenth at six P M, right?
On my calendar, but generally, I just think of
Generally, yes, but you're not sure.
Goodbye, chief.
Excuse me?
Is it good for you?
What does I do right now?
Do that.
Well, I know Yoffa would like a response at some point on whether we're approving the proposed budget. I'm not sure if there's a deadline for that or what the timing is. I know, I know they didn't want to be in a position again this year like they were last year, were they? It's all kind of a late decision.
Yeah.
And none of the government stuff is going to happen before we need to make that decision.
I I wouldn't go.
And I was getting a feeling of the the general thoughts of the group for the the three people through a grant is a good idea. Um, except for George maybe.
Well, my only hesitation, I I and and maybe we could ask Mark to check that party, whether or not that would jeopardize and put us in a worse position than next contract by basically hiring three and then randomly assigning shifts, locations. Or you're unbalancing the shifts.
But voting for this budget isn't necessarily any committing to grants. Because the money, we need the money for the people that we have now.
I, or in that issue, I'm somewhat comfortable. I'm comfortable with three firefighters.
Chief, I I just wanted to say, those three would not create an unbalance of shifts. It would be one person, each shift. So shifts would re would stay back on a shift perspective, but a location perspective. Correct, but it would, it would also bring consistency to that special service unit.
So whose, whose township do they belong to? And does that cause that continued issue of not being able to use people in the locations that make the most sense for?
Yeah, that is.
Does it get exacerbated by getting these three people and maybe putting two in Manchester?
No, because the 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 very, the whole idea here would be they would be in down here in
Springfield.
On the ladder truck that's stationed in Spring Garden Township serves Springfield Township. I'm not even looking at anybody up there right now.
Whose people are they?
Dolphins people.
Yeah.
They would not be Manchester.
On train the day for.
Yeah. They would be, they would fall under.
All right.
So my my bigger concern is, as I mentioned, and it's more from the management oversight perspective, from a personnel policy standpoint, is the request to increase the benefit package on top of other drip, drip, drip increases we've seen in the past yet to come in the future. I think for those of you weren't here at one time, Springfield handled the personnel policies and procedures for Yoffa. I'm not sure, I was before I went on the Alpha board at some point, that shift went over to Yoffa. They took that on and I will just say that I don't have the confidence, not because I know anything. When we get these proposals, there's no analysis to back it up. I get uncomfortable. Guess that's my roundabout way of saying if there were another set of eyes that looked no experience. Yeah, I think we talked about cost benefit analysis to quantify the benefits, uh, just that higher, in my mind, for that too. Because there's always going to be a difference between union and non-union pay and benefit. Always going to happen. And I understand if you're in a union and you're up with a non-union position, you want to basically, don't want to come out worse, whether that's the situation here. You know, sweet guy, I didn't mention anything about battalion chiefs having a car that can use to go back and forth to work, which has the best getting to and from work. You don't have to pay with rent, turn your bar and gas. So of course that wasn't that. So again, I just I feel better when there's a formal personnel policy of things that you're correcting your overall policy and making changes in order to make sure you're paying all your existing employees fair and competitive pay and wages as well as they being able to retain work going forward. It's a comfort that we have that. And we, this could be the issue that says, look, let's, let's take a look at before we provide it based on.
And 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 to George's point, the proposed change is anticipation of maybe having a difficult time getting people to take these jobs. It's not a problem we've actually had yet to my my understanding.
Is that true, chief?
This time around, it is anticipated. Uh, a year ago, when we had a battalion chief opening, uh, I had one out of twelve possible. Uh, and uh, we actually did survey the that group of employees that could have been eligible to find out why.
She could have gone outside also to advertise, bring in some of them outside, which we didn't do in that situation, correct?
No, we didn't. Um, I feel that that our department is best served with internal promotion and bring somebody in from the outside, uh, the learning curve to get them operational. It's very substantial.
So the path forward for that change, is that again, a Yoffa board decision? Or is that going to be driven by us deciding whether or not we ratify instead of?
If we ratify the budget, that change will happen. And chief, just to clarify, the budget includes the safer grant. If we get the safer grant, does that mean that you hires are hot in that?
Yes, sir.
Who would make that hiring decision? Is that management? Is that permission?
Now we've gone before the commission to approve, uh, to to accept that grant. Look like, again, I go back. I can't simply put resources in place that the commission chose to do it. They have the option.
And permission to go for the safer grant in this budget. Budget doesn't control that.
That was not my intention, Mr. Swammer. My intention, my intention was to put, again, put the resources there that if the charter townships are so inclined, they can, by resolution, or uh, for lack of a better word, support a safer grant when you.
From new areas.
Nothing to approve regarding that now.
Nothing in the budget for that, right? Other than you're, you have the allocation for turn that. That was, that was my point.
Exactly. We're not really voting on safer grant, right?
With this.
Correct. I guess I would say that indirectly, maybe the standpoint that if we leave the expenditures in for the training costs and the other costs of the people, essentially prove their hire, assuming there's no added cost to the budget. So I need a legal interpretation there, but I, again, I, I personally collective bargaining issue aside, to mention, I don't have an issue with the safer grant. And I may have the collective bargaining, maybe a non-issue, something you're gonna want to get answers to.
Chief, you have the dollars in the budget to, um, to modify the, um, battalion chief package?
I do. Providing permission decides what they want to do.
Can that commission be everybody against the two of you?
That is an assessment. That is an observation.
Trying to be realistic. So that piece does come down to decision as to whether we want to support the budget now to include that or have an evaluation done of what the true need is first.
That's what will get me comfortable with it.
And what do we think timeline is to come back with the numbers that will make you comfortable?
There I would probably rely on our staff and our personnel to take a look at what's posed, benefit package.
And for giving you work.
Use their professional insight, the locals, because they did that for us last year, we talked about. Uh, so pay increase, administrative stuff. They took a look at the job description, they took a look, job duties actually being performed. And I, I would assume matched it up against pay and benefit schedules that they had obtained in, in putting our policy in place in Springsberry. So I have a very high degree of confidence in our personnel department in Springsberry to be able to evaluate these types of things. Yeah, no problem. This, this is what we need to do from a competitive standpoint. Not so sure.
So are we suggesting then that we're pretty comfortable with everything in the budget except for that particular issue and that we want to have more information before we fix it?
That's what I, that's what I'm saying, except I would request that Mark reach out to Pat Harvey and ask the question about future contract negotiations, whether these three positions will jeopardize anything in our future.
Mr. Cox, any comments?
I find it interesting. I'm, I'm personally, I'll take a look at the, the package, sir.
Mr. Bishop?
Sounds good to me.
Mr. Worster.
I always love good assessments.
So it looks like we're a lot further than we were last year, but not all the way there. Does that make sense?
Sure. And we do have a Yalfer meeting tomorrow night, so we did share a page with them about what's.
All right, tell me what's next.
I think that's it. Public comment.
Public comment? No attendees? Anybody in the peanut gallery? You're a resident too, right? You started to do some.
I, but I didn't bag it soon.